Very good. Welcome to the October 10, 2017, meeting of the Sherburne Board of Selectmen. And we'll ask our town administrator to please read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll vote to approve or amend the agenda. That topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance, and I'm not aware of any of those items. Then, public comment, and then consideration of appointments. Library Board of Trustees Lisa Schwartz, term to expire May 2018. Open Space Committee, Seth Molly, term to expire June 15, 2020. An Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector, John Rose, term to expire June 15, 2018. Under Financial Matters, a library warrant review and temporary treasurer appointment consideration for Heidi Doyle, term to expire May 2019. In consideration of the date for a special election, consideration of special town meeting warrant. Then, under Routine Business, Town Administrator reports selectmen items minutes of August 15, 2017, and September 12, 2017, and then set the next meeting and adjourn.
Okay, very good. We have a motion to approve that agenda?
Second.
All in favor? That's great. And we've got public comment. We have two people on the list, and the first is Nancy Hess, our town collector. He's not.
Is this yours?
Oh, okay. I thought you were passing me something. Hello, Nancy.
Hello. We finally have the bills out on the street now, so hopefully anyone who was expecting one has received it, and if not, they should contact us. It was a little chaotic this year, so I'm expecting a few things to come back with either missing a stamp or an address or whatever. But in that bill is our usual flyer that tells people about paying by the due date, and the due date will be on the bill because we were not able to use November 1. We made a generic flyer to go, a stuffer to go in, so it says, you know, you have 30 days from the date of mailing, which puts the due date at November 9 rather than November 1. But as I usually beg people to pay it as soon as they can, especially people who don't depend on their mortgage company to pay it, because that helps with our cash flow, and if we don't have to borrow, it saves taxpayers' money because that has a cost to it. So I would encourage, and our taxpayers are really amazing because they have already, some that got their bill on Saturday, sat down and paid it online. So hopefully there'll be more people who will send it in or go and pay online so that we can keep our cash flow healthy while we wait for the due date to come. So on that, it also gives information about the website so that you can go online and pay not only your excise, your real estate, but your excise, and has information about the programs that are for the veterans and the different exemptions and so forth that the assessors manage. And at the bottom is a form that you can fill out and send money in to support the tax aid program for the elderly and the disabled, which there is a committee that distributes that money to help defray the cost of taxes for those people. And also in your tax bill is a flyer from the recycling committee to help refresh your memory about what can go in. And one of the things that I think has been very successful is the food waste collection because I know from our household, that's what weighs the most in our trash stuff. So if you read that and participate, and it tells you about the swap shop as well. So once again, I urge people to pay the tax bill.
It's just a train coming through, Rick. It's fine.
As long as it's not a train wreck, we're okay. So that's basically, I just want people to know that they're out there, so if they don't have one, they should get in touch with us, and we'll get them one. They are not up online yet on tax bills online. That takes the vendor some time to get them up there, but we're happy to email them one if they haven't gotten it, so they can have it right away.
Very good.
The other thing I would like to say, I know you're going to be talking about this down the road, but I'd like to put a plug in. I've had the pleasure of working with the candidate for treasurer, and I think we have a keeper, so I would support very much your going forward with that. I didn't see that's on your agenda later on, so.
Yep, we'll call on you if...
And you'll still be her assistant treasurer, correct?
Temporary assistant.
Yes.
Yes. That's because I'm the only one bonded in the building, so I'm very anxious to see that move forward, and hopefully people will be able to take some of that back.
Good. Thank you. Great. Thanks, Nancy. Now, we've got Sue Tyler. Susan, I can't decipher quite what it is you want to talk about, so...
I can, and I'm not going to say.
What did it say?
It says MCI Laddies.
Ladies.
Oh, ladies, okay.
And that's exactly what I want to talk about.
Go ahead.
Susan Tyler, Western Avenue. I'm also on the Cemetery Commission, and I think it's been at least a decade that we've had the ladies from MCI assisting the town with trash pickup. I know they've done some painting and such at the fire station here and there. And I know I've been in touch with their engineer of land management, this and that, over at MCI recently, and they, I will once again be having the ladies come out and help. On Perry Street, there are two cemeteries that are related to MCI framing, and one is what is known as the Clara Barton Cemetery. And across the street that adjoins a town cemetery is the Reformatory Cemetery. And I've had them out there once before, a couple, two years ago, and I've got them coming out again this October for cleanup, a brush, and trees, and leaves, and such. And it makes me wonder, I noticed that this past year, we haven't had the ladies come out. I haven't seen them at all in Sherburne doing anything. And it's usually this time of the year, separate from the cemetery, I, as a resident, have always requested that we send a letter of thanks to MCI and the ladies for the work that they've done. Well, I can't request that this year because I haven't seen that they're here, and I'm wondering, is that a, something that slipped through the cracks on the town side as far as not helping? But if we can follow up as to this coming year to get them back out, they're very appreciative. I know we're appreciative of the work that they do and the cleanup that they do. I personally, on the cemetery side, will be having them do some work, but as the town, again, if we can find out and get them on board again.
I have no idea how that's set up.
I don't know. I know it was, we started about 10 years ago. There was concern in the beginning that, oh my goodness, they're going to be casing our properties, and that's so far from the case. All the ladies that I have met over the years are very appreciative and respectful and thankful to be able to get out and to show that they're helping society as a whole for whatever pieces they're allowed to be given. And also, I'm taking advantage as a cemetery commission of that help, and if we can look on that again as a town-wide...
Does our town administrator know anything about this?
Yeah.
You do? Okay. You can talk offline with Susan?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Cool. I know they've been through a transition. They've got two new members of their divisions over there and, anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, great. Now, we're up to consideration of appointments, and I think the library trustees are here, so thank you. We've got a, I guess, a joint appointment to consider for a member of the library board of trustees. Someone has nominated Lisa Mark Schwartz.
They should actually call their meeting to order.
Have you called it to order? Yeah, that's great. All right. And so there were two candidates? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah, we had two candidates raise their hand, which we're very grateful for, and we had a discussion at our September 19 trustee meeting to talk about the priorities of the board and areas where we felt we needed support moving forward. And there was even a consensus among the trustees that this background was a good fit for some of the areas we really wanted to focus on. So that is the nominee that we're bringing forward to tonight for the joint nomination.
And David, this was advertised, this position?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Good, good deal. Anybody have any questions, or?
Her fundraising experience is really impressive. These are some impressive groups. Is she here at the?
She was on her way. She doesn't live too long, so she might show up when I get down.
No, it's just kind of a who's who, high-end research institutes, mainly Cambridge, but impressive.
Great, good. Anybody else? Sean?
No, it's a shame she's not here, but I suppose we shouldn't wait.
I don't think we need to wait. I mean, do you have anything else to add on this, or? So I think the way we do this is we just have a nomination and a second, and then we all just vote. Do we have to do a roll call vote on this, or no?
Yeah.
We do. Yeah, I think we do. So we can do a, somebody can nominate her. I guess you've already nominated her, Mary. So we have a second on that nomination?
Second.
Chuck was saying, look at this inter-board cooperation. This is so nice, Chuck. This is really good. All right, so I'll call, why don't you call your board first, and then it doesn't matter how we vote.
Mary Moore, aye. James Murphy, aye. Dave Brown, aye. Chris Kennedy, aye. Brian
Conley, aye.
Ms. Keanu, aye. Jennifer Searle, aye.
Okay, so we'll do this, Chuck?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And I'll be aye also. Great, that's good. So, oh, Lucy, good. Just in time. Should we reconsider the vote now?
I'm sorry you missed the vote.
I wanted to see her make a pitch to Mike to see if she could get...
Fundraising?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what you...
I wanted to see if she could get you to write a check.
Yeah. Nancy does that. She sends a bill, and people pay by return mail. I mean, it's great. All right, good. Thank you. Thanks very much. You're welcome to stay, but we're going to be talking about your budget in a little bit, so...
We watch the rest of the day.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah, we're going to be talking about the budget, so it probably makes sense if some of you want to stay.
It's more than a mark, it's a chart or a diagram.
It's the next thing, isn't it?
It'll probably be in five or 10 minutes.
It's in five or 10 minutes, so it will probably be less than that, unless we have a long discussion about the Assistant Plumbing Inspector or something. Okay, good.
We don't have enough information to have a long discussion.
All right, so do we have a, we've got an Open Space Committee appointment to fill. We've got somebody named Seth Malloy, who has an impressive application, also with experience on mapping and working within the trail system in town. Does anybody have? And David, this was an advertised opening. Very good. Do we get more than one candidate?
I don't think so. Sorry, Open Space Committee, nobody else?
No, I haven't.
Okay, well, it was nice of Mr. Malloy to volunteer, so we'll take a nomination on this position.
I would nominate Seth Malloy to be a member of the Open Space Committee for a term to expire June 15, 2020.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. I guess we should have specified that that library trustee seat is for a term to expire at the annual town election next spring. Okay. I just want to make sure the public knows that we didn't vote on an open-ended position. And then we've got a request from the building inspector to appoint an Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector, John Rose, with a term to expire June 15, 2018. And do we have a?
So moved.
Motion, okay.
And Jack is the inspector in Medfield, so obviously well-qualified and experienced. I'll second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor of that appointment. Very good. That's great. Now, we've got financial matters, and so now we're up to the library warrant. And Sharon, you're going to walk us through your information.
Sure. If anyone needs a copy, they can. Actually, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so I sent out a brief analysis of the library construction project, and I actually, probably every other week, I send this out to the library trustees and also our auditors. So this summary just shows what our receipts are, our expenditures, and our remaining balance. So as far as donations go, $2,845,833 has been received from the library, and to date, on those donations, we've spent $67,941. The balance remaining is $2.7 million. And then there's the state grant. We've received $2.1 million on that. We've spent $2 million. We've got a balance right now of $173,904. And we also have additional projected receipts for that, as well as two other grants. So we're going to see about $1,005,000 coming in, in additional grant money. And then also, at the last two town meetings, there were two bond articles. One of them was $1 million, and that was two years ago. And then this past town meeting, it was, there was an article for $190,750 for the roof. So the expenses to date are $2,082,000. I have a list below of all the vendors that we have paid to date. So, and what I will do is continue on a bi-weekly basis to send this out to everybody so that you can see exactly where we stand. And then what David has requested is that before we process the bills, that they come to you guys, to the selectmen to review and sign the warrant. So I have hot off the presses this week's warrant that's going to be processed. These payments have not been rendered yet. This week, the warrant for the library is $245,000. I can give this to you.
Okay. So the one that's in our package is last week's?
Last week, yes.
Okay. And that's been already approved, or not?
That was already approved. That was prior to this new procedure, so this is...
So you don't have, do we have copies of this, or?
No, but I'll make them.
Okay.
So this week's warrant is $245,000 for $2,547. There's three invoices that we're paying, one for Community News for $117,26, one for Five Star, the contractor, for $241,55816, and then one for $3,750 to Robert Evans Murals. So all the paperwork is there, and all the signatures from the library committee, and...
So that's not on that list, Chuck? That's here?
Yeah, no, I was just looking.
Yeah, so that list, this is, it's not here yet.
Just out of curiosity, what are they putting the murals on?
It was a, it was a memorial, a children's room, and all the interiors committee voted to do that, and it's going to be funded by a gift to the recreation fund that the friends are...
So they're starting that now on the interior?
No, it's the design that they're starting.
I see, okay.
So there's been no borrowing at all to date, yeah?
And this, I think, there was a ton of emails about some of this. I believe this came up the other night in a building committee meeting because they're trying to avoid the lag of, the building committee signs off on a warrant, then the trustees sign off on a warrant, which could be two weeks later. Then it hits a warrant. So it could be that the construction team should be getting a payment, and it's six weeks late. Because if you take the lag to a building committee meeting, and then you take that lag, depending on when the trustees are going to meet, the concern was the payments would be held up further than they should be to the contract. I think that's why we're getting it. Is that correct?
Well, I think the issue was raised that there could be a potential lag, and there hasn't been to this point. But the issue was raised at the LBC meeting that there could be a lag, and this one was not on.
Yeah, we talked about it in building committee, and we're going to bring a motion to the trustees to allow the building committee to approve rather than just recommend for it, to take that two-week potential slot out. And it would be a formality at our trustee meetings, which could be in two weeks now.
Right. But, so this one is basically following that?
Correct.
Without that vote, because the building committee voted on this the other night?
Correct, and our trustee meetings next week.
It's Tuesday.
Right. But this will make the warrant this week. That's the intent, correct?
Yes, yep.
So that's why, it wasn't to scrutinize a warrant that is, I think, pretty routine. It was to change the process a little to avoid, because you can see that they would have missed this warrant, and it would have pushed out two to three weeks, at least two.
Yeah, I don't know.
But that's why this is here. It's not for another set of eyes to run over the warrant. Because they're doing these once or twice a month?
Every other week. Oh, well, our warrants will go every other week, though.
Right.
And the building committee meets first Monday, typically. Occasionally, it has to be adjusted, and then the trustees meet the second, Tuesday, depending on...
So going forward, the intent is the building committee is going to sign off on this, and it's going to head right to catch the rest of the warrant. We won't be reviewing this each month, correct?
And Chris is the...
If you want to review it, you review it.
Well, we have the opportunity to review anything on the warrant, but it won't individually come up here.
Well, we can, though. I mean, I think it probably makes sense to at least keep track of what's going on with the project, and, you know, I know you have a building committee meeting, but I'm not sure how, how much of the public attends those. So the thought was to just get an update. It looks like the, and I don't even know what the total construction contract is, but it looks like we're running at a pretty good rate, and the construction's going at a pretty good rate. And so far, according to Sharon, we're, you know, $2 million into the project. So, and I don't know if that's on track, if that's not on track or not, but I mean, it's helpful to understand that. I mean, I don't know if anybody's got any thoughts on that, the building committee or anybody, in terms of are we, is this burn rate what you thought it was going to be? Are you where you thought it would be, or?
It represents 20% of the total contract value for Five Star. We'd like to be further ahead, but there's a plan in place to catch up, so...
So the other money on here, that's 20% for Five Star, and the rest of it is, it looks like that must be more than 50% of the extras. Is that?
Design consultants, etc.
Right, okay.
Architecture was a big one.
People involved.
Yeah, because it looks like the overall budget, you're around 26%, 27%. So...
You spend a lot of the design fees, right?
And there's some front charges, though, like the other source, $30,000 is a free pay, and we've low-mired some living expenses from last December.
Design's always going to be heavily loaded to the front.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay, anybody have more questions on this? David, you got any questions, or?
Yeah, we've been asking questions of Sharon.
Okay.
But you don't have to vote on anything. The only thing you have to vote is if you wanted to hold something.
Well, it's not, there's not a lot of detail here, so I'm not sure what we'd be holding it on the basis of. I mean, it's just that we're getting a number. We're not getting really any backup or any other information on what's done for that number, but I'm, you know, assuming the building committee looks really carefully at all that.
I mean, we can bring the full warrant. I was expecting more pages, so I just took the cover page. But we can copy the whole warrant.
Yeah, that's what I have there. I'll make copies for all of you.
Yeah, no, I mean, what we have here really is just a, it's basically just invoice summaries. It's not vouchers, I guess. It's...
Well, yeah, if you, where that paper, that clip is, that's the actual invoice.
I think she sent it here.
No, it's under this stuff.
Yeah, so that's all the detail. And I can make copies for you if you'd like that. And that will show that...
That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, we can look through this at our leisure, I think. I don't think we have to do that at a meeting here.
Okay.
But it is, you know...
Okay. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to, I can email it to you then.
You know, it is helpful to know what's going on. And this is the summary, so out of the $6.8 million to the contractor, there's been $1,003,000 completed, I guess, and $1,000,000 paid, and $241,000 due now, so...
And that, I believe, is exactly what they went through last Monday at their building committee. So they have that thoroughly, there's several members that I know that thoroughly went through that before the meeting.
Excellent, good. All right. Anything else anybody wants to add or explain to the public on this? Are we catching back up in terms of the timing, or is it still a little bit of a delay?
Well, there's a big delay because of the walls from last summer.
Right.
But we got a schedule from the contractor, and we are optimistically looking forward to seeing some framing go up. And I think at the end of this week, we'll start to see some new progress on the outside. They have been very busy on the inside.
Yeah.
A lot of HVAC and the electrical, so it's, but that's been moving forward. We still have some site issues to resolve, and we're looking forward to Sean and others helping us work with the master D P on how we resolve all that.
That's the tank?
Yep.
Saw that tree come down today.
Anything else? No, Chuck? All right, great. Thank you.
Nancy, thanks, Sharon. I think she's been a great partner with the trustees and library building committee in keeping us really, you know, on the same page with the numbers. And if she has questions, she comes right to us, and I think it's been a very productive relationship, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I know we got a lot of different numbers in the emails today, but I was, I was really, I was really sure somebody was going to have the exact number at some point, so that's good. Excellent, thank you. All right, let's move on. What's next?
We're not voting.
We don't have to vote on anything, no?
All right. Thank you.
So now we have a temporary treasurer appointment consideration. David, you want to walk us through, through this process?
Yes. As of June 30, the elected treasurer had resigned the position, and the selectmen had appointed me as temporary treasurer, I think until the end of the fiscal year, no, the end of the calendar year, till the next election. What, we posted the position, and I've been treasurer now for, what, four months, and there's definitely a demand to get somebody solid in that seat because we also had the assistant treasurer go out. So that's why Nancy's been stepping up and doing some temporary treasurer duties. Sharon has been awesome helping out, and we brought Heidi Doyle on, who had applied for the position. I think she's been here now three weeks, two or three weeks, and she's been working with Sharon and myself and Nancy in trying to get some things pulled together for the auditors, plus our consultants, so that we can keep things going. But I thought it would be good if you met Heidi and let her introduce herself and ask any questions you may have.
Yeah, and so Heidi, if you want to come up to the microphone, and as David suggested, introduce yourself and tell us what you've been doing, and then, you know, we'll talk about the treasurer.
Okay. My name's Heidi Doyle. I've moved to Sherburne a little over a year ago now. I had gone to Dover Sherburne High School, so it's kind of like homecoming after a lot of years. Saw the position posted online, and I was just wrapping up a job in Worcester and was looking for something closer to home. And this position appealed to me. My undergraduate degree had been in economics and urban planning, but at that time, there was nothing available when I had graduated, so I kind of had veered off to do a variety of different things. I have my resume with me if you want to look through that.
We got that, yeah.
Okay. I recently had gone to law school and passed the bar back in 2014, and have been working as a mediator. So this is something, I will not have an accounting background as such. I mean, it's been a long year since my economics training, but I am very willing and able to learn, and I feel this is a position I could work with and would be, would love the chance to work with it.
Okay. And David, what's the plan for training? And it sounds like from, you know, and obviously you're aware of this, Heidi has not been a treasurer, so what's your game plan here?
I mean, there are immediate needs that the consultant that we had brought on in June, that they're working on. And we've had, also Suzanne is back, and she has been working on some bigger picture things with Heidi. And the consultants we brought on in June are working on just day-to-day things with Heidi. So just to keep things going. And we want to get her starting just like, as if she was the assistant treasurer, receiving the cash, and then start doing the cash flow projection and reconciling at the end of the month with the town accountant, and then taking care of any of these banking issues that seem to not go away and keep coming, coming along. So right now, we've just, we've been trying to figure out where all the money is and getting it into something that's easily understandable to everyone.
You need to clarify what you mean by that?
There's no lost money. We know where the money's at, but we're trying to get it into simpler forms that whoever steps into the... We know where the money's at, but we're trying to get it into simpler forms that whoever steps into the position can understand where the funds are.
Because there's a lot of accounts, is what you're saying?
Yes, there's a lot of accounts. And in talking to Heidi, she's interested in the position. She was, she was office manager of her husband's practice for a couple of years, so she has some financial exposure. Everything we've seen so far has been great. Suzanne, the consultant, came in and talked to me, and she gave me a two thumbs up and highly recommended that we bring her on as quickly as possible, that she was picking up things at an amazing speed. And Suzanne was a former treasurer as well. So we're really hopeful that we could get an appointment for her through the end of the term, which would be the election of May 2019. And that would give her time to get up to speed and do the training with that. I think we figured out that the formal training is in the summer.
August, yes, is the yearly training.
So she would have to go to that training. But in the meantime, we'll rely on the consultants to keep us going and phase them down, just like we did with Sharon, who started in, and we got the consultant working out of the picture.
So who would oversee our borrowing and keep track of our investments and things like that?
That would be me, Sharon, and Heidi.
And the title would be temporary treasurer?
Yes.
And the motion that you sent in the packet was an email to Darren Klein with a proposed motion, language for a motion. Does he possess that language?
I don't have that back yet.
I'm sorry?
I don't have the language back yet from him, but this was basically the same as the language that he...
Looks like, I think it'll work.
...forward when I was appointed.
And Heidi, the fact that you're a lawyer, there are at least two members of the board that won't hold that against you. I can't speak for the non-lawyer on the board.
Heidi has also expressed interest that she'd be willing to run for, or she wants to run for the position, should it stay elected or be appointed, either way.
Okay.
I'm willing to talk to other towns. I mean, I, there's a lot of resources I would look into, because the training in August is just too long to wait, so.
Well, that's what I would think, too. So what's your background, or sort of how are you going to come up to speed on things like the borrowing requirements, investments? I know you're a lawyer, so you can read statutes and regulations, but, you know, so what's your game plan to step into this? These are pretty big.
Yes, they are. Yes, no, it is. My initial game plan is, first off, priority day-to-day. I need to understand and figure out the bank accounts, the money, the warrants, and get that set and organized. The debt borrowing, I was going to count on the consultants for at least the next month. My hope is that within three months I'll be more up to speed on where some of the bigger pictures are. It's going to be a lot of reading, research, talking to other towns, other people. I'm going to ask, see if I can spend some time with some other treasurers and towns to see what they're doing. I am not going to be conversant on it in three months, but I'm hoping to have enough of a handle on it to understand where everything is and count on some of the consultants or yourselves and David to take a look at the past pictures of what's been done and not recreate the wheel, but...
Okay, and I think we went way over last year on the line item, right, because we had, or was that financial manager?
That was town accountant.
Yeah, town accountant, okay. But do you have a budget here that would let you pay Heidi and also pay the consultant and?
No, I would expect it to go over. I mean, we were left in a, we brought somebody in and had, they were working basically 20 hours a week, starting out. So Heidi's position would be, I think, 24, and then as soon as the assistant treasurer comes back, she would be doing three hours, and that's the budget. So we would have to wean off the existing consultant as quickly as we can.
Which doesn't sound very practical. I mean, to me, that doesn't sound that practical, given the learning curve and...
Which, what does...
It is, it is practical.
Weaning off the consultant quickly doesn't sound...
Quickly might not be very...
Well, on the day-to-day, I mean, what they're doing is keeping things moving day-to-day. The bigger picture stuff, they haven't had the time to get into, and that's why we said Suzanne could supplement those those bigger picture things about cash flow projections and the debt, debt schedules and...
Borrowing.
Yeah.
Investments.
But we have those, I mean, we have financial advisors for both of those investments and for the borrowing. So those, you know, I have no problem with, I have experience in those for a long time.
Okay.
Some of the extra time...
It's the, it's these, it's the day-to-day and recording of things and reconciling at the end of the month that is time-consuming.
Through this quarter, you wouldn't need to help anyway with the new system, right? I mean, some of the time spent with the consultant has been...
This consultant specifically was recommended by Vedar, the people who put this system in for us. So they have come in and reviewed different things that we've been doing and changed a lot of processes in the finance department, including some with the treasurer.
So there's been a benefit to that, despite the fact that at the end of the year, we're going to probably go over. There's been a benefit to some of the process improvements.
Right, right.
And you're always going to take a hit when you switch systems.
Right.
There's going to be extra work.
Yeah, we really won't know how much we're going to go over, but I think it's less than, it's a lot less than what we went over transitioning with the accountant position.
Hope so.
Yeah, a lot less.
So Carol and then Nancy?
Well, a couple of things. David, did you just say the consultant will be working 24 hours a week, or Heidi will be working 24?
When the consultant started, they were working about 20 hours a week. Heidi is, is going to be working about 24, which is what's budgeted.
So you created a new benefited position?
No, this is the treasurer. This is what's budgeted for the treasurer. Same number of hours, same benefits, same hourly rate.
It's been 24 and 3 for the last couple of years, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I, I thought the treasurer's hours were less than that. I apologize if I'm wrong there. Couple of things. Your reasoning seems sound on this question, and Heidi, to have the endorsement of Nancy Hess, carries a huge amount of weight. But again, I have to state my concern. This is an elected position, and to appoint someone for a year and seven months is taking away that choice from the voters, and I have to say, I have a problem with that.
I need financial management, that's what, that's what my goal is. Nancy?
I just wanted to say that when Heidi is appointed treasurer, she will be able to join the professional organization, and they are a terrific network of support. In fact, I approached some of them to help Lisa, and she was trying to pick up some of the pieces for the treasurer's position. And I had several people step forward and say they'd be very happy to be a resource holder, so there's a great network of collective treasurers in that association that I'm sure could be very helpful for questions that might come along. And as David said, as far as your follow-up and going, I do have people that are, as they use their counselors on that as well, so. There should be a good support system. And then she said she's already got a handle on some of the laws and things she's been doing with the statutes and stuff. The thing that really turns me on about this is she isn't returning, and she's very competitive of her life, so she'll be very careful to follow along. I think that's important in her job.
Okay. Do we have more questions?
Hi, Susan Darrow. I will have to say, kind of in conjunction with what Tom, like Carol Moppel just said, you know, when I looked at the agenda earlier and I looked to see what the term of this appointment was, I, as a resident, had to also question a year and a half appointment from an elected official. So it stood out to me just reading the agenda, so that's all.
Any other comments? No. Well, I'll ask you, how do you, sort of what you feel, how you feel about that? My understanding was you didn't want to run for election this spring, because you'll be coming up to speed, and it's a lot of an investment to make for a short-term position, is that the thinking?
The, I will run if that's what people would like me to do. I'd prefer not to have to do an election within six, seven months here, but if that's what's required of the position, I would go through. It's just it would be only for another year. Again, after that, so I'll have an election in seven months and another election again in 12 months.
That's true.
It's a lot of time to spend campaigning, if that's the case, but...
We don't usually have a lot of campaigning in Sherburne, but you're welcome to do, to do it as you please, but I don't think there's been a lot of campaigning before. We don't, you know, we're lucky to have contested elections once in a while. We don't really have a lot of those either. Chuck, you've got any thoughts on this?
No, I think this makes sense. It's, it's long for a temporary appointment. On the other hand, a five or six-month period is very short, so I'm comfortable with it. We're somewhere in between, and I would, I would go with David's recommendation. I think this makes sense.
I will comment. For a five or six-month term, I wouldn't even vote for it. I would just say, just keep the consultant. Because to think that in the next five or six months, we're going to ramp up somebody, we're going to retrain them, because regardless, they could have been a treasurer in Natick for 10 years. They'd have to come here and learn the system that we have. So to think that someone's going to come in in six months and want to rerun so that we can retrain someone in six months is ludicrous. I know it's, I know it's an elected position, but we have a town to run. And it's incumbent on us to do that. So to just constantly cause turmoil, we're filling a seat that was vacated. And there's a reason we're allowed to do that, because we need to do that. So the rest of the term needs to be covered, either by a consultant, which is going to cost a lot of money and doesn't fill the void, or somebody that's already stepped up. Anyone else? This has been advertised, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's basically been, you could have, anyone else could have run over the past month or so and shown up and said, "I want to be the treasurer." So there wasn't an official election, but there was one, and it was uncontested a year and a half ago. And this was uncontested, so...
No, I think David had interest from a few people.
There were two applicants, and it was posted for two months? Two months and advertised, yeah.
So if you posted it for 12 months, you had 12 applicants. What, I mean, this really is, we had somebody who resigned fairly early on, and we're now, what, about halfway through the three-year term? So I, I'm comfortable with the 19 months. I think it makes sense.
Yeah, no, I think Carol's point is well-taken, but I'm also, as Sean said, I'm also really interested in having some stability in our financial department, because we haven't had a lot of that recently. And if we can get some stability and somebody who is, you know, growing into the job, that would be, that would be very good. You know, and I guess I'm, I almost hate to say this, but I'm also mindful that very close to half of the people at a recent town meeting were willing to make the treasurer position combined and appointed. So I don't think it's something that's as outrageous as, as it might be otherwise, but you know, I'm willing, I guess I kind of reluctantly go along with David's recommendation. Because like I said, I mean, I understand the points that have been made about this being an elected position, and I am reluctant to take that away, but I also think the the dominating consideration is some stability in our financial system.
Yeah, I guess I have a different view. This is not altering whether, I disagree with your characterization of the town vote. I don't, my recollection was not close to 50-50, but this is not changing the, it's not making this an appointed position. It's a temporary appointment to fill an elected position. So I don't, I don't see it as any kind of endorsement of anything other than a, an appointment until the annual town election in 2019, so.
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying this was an endorsement, Chuck. What I'm saying is there were at least some people in town who are comfortable with the selectmen making an appointment, and the statutes are comfortable with the selectmen making an appointment. So that's, I guess, what we're basing it on.
Yep.
We'll take a motion and a vote? Well, first you have more questions for Heidi, or are we done with her? Okay. Susan?
If I may, not to bring up old moves, but we just recently appointed a new director to the CMD for a six-month probationary period. And if I do my math right, open a better, we're talking, we have seven months till the naturally scheduled election. So I don't see the difference here, whether it's a temporary CMD director, whether it's a temporary treasurer's position, it's still a six-month, seven-month period for the townspeople who weigh in. Versus a year and a half appointment for the next year.
In accordance with the personnel admin plan, there's always a six-month probationary period, and that, that goes with this position, too.
David, you want to say that? I don't think people heard it.
In accordance with the personnel admin plan, any hiring has a six-month probationary period.
For hired, for hired-appointed positions, not elected positions.
Right, not elected positions, right.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Do you have a motion on this?
I would move to appoint Heidi Doyle as temporary treasurer for a term continuing until the expiration of the currently vacant seat upon the completion of the 2019 annual town election, reporting to the finance director slash town accountant.
A second on that?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay. Congratulations, you're the temporary treasurer.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks for stepping forward on this, too, Heidi. We really need you.
You're welcome.
We'll revisit that in a little bit, okay? Okay, consideration of special election and consideration of special town meeting warrant. David, you want to tell us what we have to do on this?
Well, I don't think, I don't know if you resolved last time on whether you were having a special election or not. There was no date set.
That's right, there was no date set.
And the, as far as the special town meeting warrant, the warrant is open now, and we've had one preliminary article come through, and that was from Gino and the planning board that we anticipated, and it's got, but it's a marked-up version. It's not a final voted version.
All right, and that's, we were planning to close the warrant the end of this week, right?
Yeah, Friday, at noon.
Okay. And Gino knows that?
Yes.
Is he going to work on it before the close?
Well, I mean, typically, we, when somebody's put something in, yeah, we use a placeholder.
But we've got a very abbreviated process, so it's got to come into shape really quickly. And we need, how many days do we need to schedule an election? Was that right?
Sixty-four.
How many days do we need in advance?
Four days.
So if we scheduled an election now, it would have to be for at least 64 days from now, is that the idea?
Yes, and if you look at the calendar, that day, if you were to call the election tonight, 64 days would put you at December 13. First Tuesday after that is December 19. I could sit here and absolutely guarantee you that any election held the week before Christmas would have almost zero turnout. So I would propose that you move it into January to the night.
What do we do if we get a big snowstorm on an election day?
Actually, there's a whole process spelled out in statute for that.
We heard plow the heck out of the roads, I think, up here, but I'd rather have Carol's answer.
There is a process for that, and it involves actually going to court, and towns, a number of towns had to do this in the last 10...
And what do they do? They set a new date based on that? And the date is, what, a couple of weeks ahead, or how, how far out does it?
It has varied.
Okay.
I don't believe there's any specific number of days that have to elapse. It's case by case.
Okay.
But I will say that every time a town has lost court to pull the election and reschedule it because of whether courts have granted whatever they ask.
So would you say January ninth was the first Tuesday?
I don't think you want a January second election as the date after a holiday.
Yeah, that's probably not a great idea.
So the first date that I see would be January ninth.
Anybody have any thoughts up here on January ninth? The words will be clear, is that what we're hearing? No matter what?
I didn't say that, I just said plow the heck out.
I heard a guarantee there. Yeah, December nineteenth is early enough that I think people are going to be in town. But I think you're right, everyone's focus is on the holidays.
I'm confused. If someone showed up with two hundred signatures, they could call an election in forty-five days. But we can't.
No, you can.
You have to.
You're correct, sorry.
Yeah. The sixty-four days comes in that the resignation had to have occurred at least sixty-four days prior to the start of the town election. So the sixty-four days is that the resignation had to have occurred more than sixty-four days prior to the election.
Exactly, but if you, if you take all the election timeframes and count them backwards, it's sixty-four days. It's a, there's forty-five day timeframe for nomination papers. There's a fifteen day timeframe before that, plus one. It comes out.
So there's sixty-four days out works, okay.
And that's what Barbara advised you, Diane, correct?
I'll take December.
Sixty-four days, so, yeah.
Who would Barbara advise you sixty-four days?
Barbara St. Andrea.
Well, Barbara's talking about sixty-four days prior to the election.
Yeah, she's saying you can schedule the election.
At the annual town election.
Right.
If the resignation, that's a different sixty-four days.
That is a different, right.
Right.
So.
Probably the same calculation, but.
I'm going to look at the statute because I just want to make sure we're.
Just an additional note, the statute, here's a statute that says the caucus committee may hold the caucus. I haven't heard back from them whether or not they plan to do so. They're not required, but they may, should they choose.
But that's up to them, Carol?
I'm sorry?
Is that up to them?
Yes.
Okay, so that's up to them. I'm just, I'm just trying to find this statute that Barbara cites here.
I'm going to suggest December. If, if, we're going to still have absentee ballots. You can still do absentee ballots, right?
Absolutely.
Well, if people need to leave before the nineteenth of December, then they can fill out an absentee ballot. It's that important to them. But the likelihood of getting washed out by a snowstorm in January is much higher than December.
Should we have snow that day? I would expect to be personally driven from my home to town hall by a CMMD straight giant truck.
If not, I'll call the guy that does your, your driveway.
I have a sled. I have a board. We'll get you here.
That's right, could you just.
So we, we have to file, we have to follow the statute, and we have to file a notice with the town clerk not less than fifteen days before the last day to submit nomination papers.
And that's forty-five days.
That's where you're getting the forty-five days from, okay. Great.
It's more than a week before Christmas.
Yeah, it's less than a week before Christmas, unless you celebrate a different Christmas.
Well, you're right. I celebrate the whole week, sorry. It was the nineteenth, correct?
So why isn't that a sixty-day period, then? Instead of, I don't know where the sixty-four is coming from. I don't see it in this MGL, chapter forty-one, section ten. I don't, I don't see any sixty-four day requirement.
I thought Mike just read it.
No, I read it has to be fifteen days before nomination papers are due.
Which are due forty-five days before.
We would have to file a notice with Carol tonight in order to make it onto December nineteenth. I mean, I think we should set an election, I'm comfortable with January, but I'm also, if you guys want December, then. That's what it would be.
I, it, Carol is certainly a lot more experienced with these dates, so I would defer to her recommendation. And set it for January ninth.
I, I think it's, it saves whoever is elected selectman from having to work over the holidays, too, so. I think that's the, I think that's a benefit of it.
Do they have to be a cookie sale at the Unitarian Church?
They're going to avoid the cookie sale.
Because that would narrow the field substantially if we had, if any of that was a requirement, so, yeah.
All right. Okay, so do you want to set that for, give me the date again, Carol, I'm sorry. January ninth?
Ninth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, January ninth, is it? That's not a day after a holiday, is it? Okay.
The second would have been the day after a holiday.
Right, and then there's.
January eighth is a holiday.
Yeah, there's two, the, the first and the third Mondays, so, okay. Good. All right, so do we have a motion for the ninth of January?
That week is the JP Morgan Biotech Conference in San Francisco, so quarter of the town is going to be out there for that. I would move that we set January ninth as the date for the special town election.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Okay, very good. So special town election for selectmen on January ninth, twenty eighteen. And that would fill out the balance of a term? Right, that's, that's how it works?
Right.
Okay. And David, you'll let the, whoever's on the caucus committee know also in case they want to schedule a caucus?
Yeah, George.
And we need to have a written notice to the town clerk that we've scheduled this? Even though she's here, we still have to give a written notice under the statute. Okay. Consideration of special town meeting warrant, there's not a lot we have to do on this, right, David? It's just, it's open, and folks have until Friday at noon to submit a notice of intent. Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, to submit a proposed warrant article, which means you'd need to have the signatures if you're doing a signature article. Or if you're a, a board that wants to get an article on that you think the selectmen will lick on the warrant, then you can submit that.
Right.
Okay. Let's see. Town administrator, Carol, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just going to ask, do we have any articles so far?
Just the one from Gino for the planning board David mentioned before, which are.
One in two parts or two separate articles?
Yeah, what, what about that, David?
It's supposed to be two separate articles.
Okay. Good.
It'll have to be two, it can't be one.
Right, I think it does have to be two.
It's a zoning bylaw change, right?
Yes. Okay, town administrator report?
You covered everything I needed already.
Okay, any selectmen reports? No? Okay. Minutes, Diane?
Yep, before you have August fifteenth and September twelfth draft minutes for our consideration.
Minutes, terrific, I did not see any typos, but I know Michael is much better at this than.
No, I think when Paul's here, he's the typo fiend, but I, I don't, I haven't really found any typos. Paul usually manages to find a couple. You?
I read through them and I didn't see any.
Oh, you already checked the ones he found, yeah, okay. Moved and approved?
I have a follow-up question about the blitz dog hearing, but do it after the, after we, I've moved to approve.
Sean's moved, you're seconding?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, those minutes are approved.
Um, has either Braden Haney or Doug Haney provided the evidence that they've obtained insurance?
He did that on notice.
After speaking with you, I did call him over the phone, Chuck. And we had a long conversation about it. And I said, you know, that I had reviewed it, but I didn't see a rider.
Right.
Or an umbrella. And he's, and he claims that he's covered that prior incident when there was some medical bills, that his insurance company paid for it. And I said to him, I'm, you know, telling you this because I want to make sure that you're covered, you know? So, I mean, a dog could do quite a bit of damage very quickly.
Yep.
So he was going to call the insurance company and try, I suggested he get something in writing from them.
Right, I think it's a good idea. What he, it was a coverage letter, but not for an umbrella policy, it was for the basic homeowners.
Right.
Okay.
And I didn't see a specific animal.
Yeah, why isn't it?
Coverage claim in it, so.
Okay. Well, it's, the requirement of the, of the order is the requirement, and if, you know, if he's not in compliance with it, then that's enforceable. Okay. We had, we had another question on a scheduling item related to a, a dog nuisance hearing that we had last week. We'd continued that for a period of time.
To January.
To January, but since then, there has been at least one other complaint filed about barking dogs. I had spoken earlier with Diane and suggested that we consider making that continuation date, maybe a date in November instead of January, whatever our meeting date is for November. That's something that.
Sure.
You can do out, I mean, I, we, we said we would continue it till January, but we all, we didn't set a specific date. And we also told them that you would notify them of the continued date.
And that was a new complaint about the same dogs?
It was a new complaint, I don't think it reached the police, but, but Diane and I received separate emails from different people about a barking incident last night.
These are new complainants?
We, I know nothing about.
No, same people, same complainants, but twelve thirty-five AM dog barking. So that was something that the, the folks had said was not going to happen based on their new protocol.
They didn't guarantee a dog wasn't going to bark. My, I think my dogs barked at like twelve thirty-five AM, too, last night.
They must be really loud to be heard all the way down the bottom of Nathan Hill Road.
They're not, but I, that's the point. I, I don't think we should change the agenda because of one bark.
Well.
We're not having a nuisance dog hearing every time a dog barks, and sure.
That's a good point, Sean. I suppose we could, but I don't want to.
What's that?
I said, I suppose we could, but I don't want to.
It feels like we have there.
We've had a lot of them recently.
I don't want to overreact to it, I don't, I mean, I didn't, but I didn't see the complaint you did.
Yeah, so what's, so what's, what's the thought, then? Maybe we hold off and, and.
And then maybe consult with Sergeant Tedstone.
If he keeps getting more complaints.
If they see, if they keep coming in.
I think both Diane and I suggested that the, the complaints were better brought to the police than by email to the selectmen, who really aren't in a position to do anything.
Complaints today, to please contact the neighbor, to please call her and see if they can talk about it.
That might work, too, even if they need somebody to mediate.
Right.
Rather than in this room.
Oh, do we know any mediators?
Do we know any mediators here?
David, can you amend the personnel plan to add that to the treasurer's description? Dog, dog mediation? You've done those, great.
That's not a bad.
Um, okay. Have we set a second October meeting yet, or November meeting at all?
No.
We did set two.
Yeah, we've got one member missing, though, so we might be better off just trying to set one at this point. And I think some of us, including me, have a lot of travel going on. Would you do something next, maybe the end of next week, the nineteenth?
Do we need to?
I don't know, do we need to? We don't have to? So when's the next meeting?
The twenty-sixth would be good.
What date is that? That's a Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay, it's, it's possible that I won't be there, but that's fine.
Or anything in that week.
It's a shame we didn't get Paul, see, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to be there the rest of that week.
Oh.
No, I think we could, I think we could do that, do that if you wanted to. I don't, it doesn't get any better for me, so, so let's put it on the twenty-sixth, is that fine?
Works fine.
Can you do it, or you might be able to do it? Yeah, we'll do, I'll do it if I can do it. If, if Paul can't do it, I guess I'll have to do it, because we need a quorum, so. So let's do six thirty on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, okay?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm going to be coming from Cambridge, so six thirty would be a lot better than six.
That, Mike said that as well.
I did say.
Last time.
Okay. Um, great. And I've, I've blocked out an hour for that meeting. Nobody, nobody, David didn't hear that? I said I've just blocked out an hour for the meeting. Oh, you think we don't have enough stuff even for that, two weeks from now? I think we, I think we would.
Yes.
Okay.
There must be stuff we have work coming up towards.
Well, one thing we've got to do is, is talk about the warrant, yeah? That'd be the main thing.
It'll be closed.
That's the main topic, I think.
Yeah.
We could wait till three weeks from now, which would be Halloween.
All right, good, do we have any other business tonight?
Move to adjourn.
A second on adjourn? Okay, all in favor of adjourn? Great. Yes, see, we're, we're off our game, this three-person board thing isn't working.